Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to our city council meeting, Lussoor City Council dated Tuesday, May 28. This time, we call the meeting to order. For the pledge of allegiance.
I'd like to read this clearly, like, of the United States of America, in two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, native of all, with our team, and that's strong.
Council members, you are all present. We've been back over the weekend. We had a long weekend. I'll look, I'll look, I'll reach out to Mr. Roby if you have any questions. At this time, I will amping any motions to improve tonight's agenda. Mr. Roby, he's got something you want to share with us.
First, Mayor, I would ask if the council can consider in their motion to move item nine, reports, reports nine to appreciation before the closed session, just for current simplicity.
I don't see the problem with that. Was that a motion, Mr. Swender? Second, Mr. Sullivan, with item, agenda item eight ninety and switch around. With that, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes and the noes. We're going to tonight's consent agenda. All items on consent agenda are considered routine. I've been made available to city council at least two days in advance. These items will be enacted on motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member states in some request, which event, then will be removed from the agenda and considered in the normal sequence. Mr. Roby, at this time, I want to review these items with us.
I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have six items on tonight's consent agenda. The first is to approve city council minutes from May thirteenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting. The second, to approve disbursements through today. Included in those disbursements is one item over twenty-five thousand dollars, and that is preliminary engineering for the North Fourth Street, street utility project, open May, thirty-four thousand, twenty-five dollars and fifty cents. Item C, approve Rotary Club bingo application. We do have a distinguished member of the Lussoor Rotary Club with us tonight, Mr. Jeff Pulser. And the bingo application is for bingo at the twenty twenty-four Giant Days celebration. Item D, approve Main Street closure application for the Giant Days kickoff on June twenty-second. Item E, approve liquor licenses for deals for twenty twenty-four. And item F, approve a personal action to hiring of a full-time police officer.
Thank you. Before we invite our Rotary member, does anybody have any questions regarding consent agenda, Mr. Roby? If not, before we vote or listen, I can invite you to come up. Now, let's move on to your event.
Yeah, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, here represented, my name is Jeff Pulser. Here represented the Lussoor Rotary Club. And I would like to formally request that we, that you approve an application to the state to conduct a bingo event during Giant Days. Typically, we would run that on the Saturday of Giant Days at Park Flagon.
Thank you. Appreciate you sharing that with us. We appreciate the work that the Rotary does in the community.
Yeah, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. I don't think we'll have a problem here. So, with that said, the consent agenda was reviewed. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of tonight's consent agenda. So, Mr. Dewey, first one, second by council member Swender. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes and the noes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
You have a good evening.
Yeah, thanks. You too.
The stakes is on to the public comment, because there is no public comment tonight. So, that takes us on to our state's figures update. Mr. Roby, what do you have to share with us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just a few items tonight, activities of the last couple of weeks. We've had some conversations about the airport CIP, capital planning of the airport recently with our consulting engineers. We are planning, working closely with Marginal Aviation, which is a private aviation club. This coming weekend, we'll be hosting a pretty sizable fly-in out here at Lussoor Municipal Airport. They're expecting somewhere between a hundred and two hundred airplanes, antique airplanes, out of the airport this weekend, starting Thursday night. Very cool event. There will be a public viewing area set up in store removal building out of Municipal Airport. And so, we've been, Public Works has been working with them on that. I want to add to the mayor's kudos to the Lussoor Rotary Club for putting on the Giants Reality Challenge, which was two weeks ago today, on the fourteenth. Chief Steer and DeGraff and I had the opportunity to participate in that with a number of members of the junior class, learning about how expensive life is and how choices that you make and decisions that you encounter in your adult life can affect your personal finances. So, it's always a great, great event, and thanks to the Rotary Club for putting that on. We had a kickoff meeting with MINDOT for the LRIP funding that Lussoor County so graciously sponsored us on for the North Fourth construction project. That was two weeks ago today. Just nuts and bolts, blocking and tackling stuff with MINDOT about how the grant funding works. No surprises, no concerns. Met with Region Nine Development two weeks ago to talk about some potential regional development opportunities that they have locally. We're working with the police department and the city of Henderson, or the Henderson Roland Committee. We're gonna come on that, but they usually do the Star Crow Day Roland out of Henderson, and then they go everywhere in Sibley County, except for here. I say here because we do it properly in Sibley County, but anyway. So, we've had some conversations with Mr. Danny Graham, representing the Roland Committee in Henderson about possibly bringing the Roland here to Lussoor during Star Crow Day as part of their route. So, the police department's working on that. Met with the downtown walking tour committee about their historical placards and next steps for that. And we're working on some, with the baseball association, some planning for capital for Mr. Bruce Frank Field. I expect that some of these conversations will come up during the budget cycle next few months. And I gave a presentation last week to the Lions Club, so I want to thank the Lions Club of Lussoor for their invitation to present, just a general presentation about some of the projects that's involved with right now, and an opportunity to express to them my gratitude for all that they do for our community. That's all I have for tonight. Keep it brief.
Thank you, Mr. Roby. Anybody have any questions regarding his update? If not, then I'll take this on to our regular agenda items, and we'll start with item seven, eight, Resolution R twenty twenty-four, dash zero three three, EDA land sale. We've been working on this for quite some time. Mr. Roby, I'm gonna update his on this.
This is, I would thank you, Mr. Mayor. The EDA has for over a decade now owned approximately a hundred fifty acres of undeveloped property on the north edge of Lussoor, above the highway one sixty-nine. There have been a number of various developments that have been explored through this property over the last decade. And the EDA has explored each one of them, worked with a multitude of private parties, discussed this with the county, had conversations with other public development groups with MINDOT, with DEED, with the city, engineers, looking at different opportunities to develop this, this key corridor on undeveloped property. In, throughout the last decade, there have been various conversations with Cambria and their, regarding their future development in the North Corridor. And in twenty twenty-three, they approached the EDA and requested the EDA begin negotiations on a purchase agreement for the property. The EDA approved of those entry into negotiations, and we spent the last nine months negotiating terms of a purchase agreement with Cambria's team. Earlier tonight, the EDA did adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of the purchase agreement for the sale of the property to Cambria Real Estate Holdings. The reason this is on the city council agenda is for three reasons. One is that for the terms of the debt that the EDA holds, the EDA maintains on the property, which is held by the city's revolving loan fund. The city has to grant consent to the sale. It is the recommendation of the staff, the city council grant consent of the sale. The EDA has vetted this, discussed this for over a decade, and feels that this is the best interest of the community's economic development for this particular property. The, the second reason, other than just the consent to the sale itself, is regarding the accrued interest on the debt itself. The story is as long as, as you want it to be, but essentially, the city, city of Lussoor's revolving loan fund, which was funded federally some years ago, lent the EDA money, first of all, to purchase the property. They have the contract for deed that existed on the bulk of the property, and also lent the EDA a hundred and ten thousand dollars to demolish the former Dairy Queen. Much to the chagrin of a lot of people nowadays who still wish there's Dairy Queen on top of the hill, demolished the Dairy Queen and Ken's Quick Stop and the credit site for development, which led to the establishment of Industrial Park Street and access to the undeveloped property. This one point four eight million dollars in debt didn't have interest terms tied to it. There's a mortgage that was reported with the county and a loan adversary note that was signed by the EDA. Of, of particular importance, I think, here is the, the city and EDA, from our records, demonstrate that there was no intent on the EDA maintaining ownership of this property for an extended period of time. There were plans as early as twenty twelve to develop this property, which fell through, unfortunately. It led to, as I mentioned earlier, a series of explorations around development, attempts to sell the property. The EDA is requesting that the city accept this payment in full on the two debt instruments, the principal balance that's owed on the loans, and has asked the city to waive any penalties, fees, or accrued interest on both the mortgage and the loan. So, that's the second piece. The third piece is planning commission review. So, statutorily, when public land is either required or dispensed with, the planning commission has to review it to consider any tie-in or potential conflicts with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommendation at this time is the city council dispense with the planning commission review, namely because the planning commission itself did consider this property as recently as November of twenty twenty-three, when it recommended the city council in Dot Portland six oh three, which rezoned the property and ensured that the zoning mechanism comprehensive plan was in line with what the future use of the property would be. So, considering the planning commission has very recently reviewed this property in particular, or very specifically, these two parcels, staff recommendation is that city council would dispense with the planning commission review. That would mean that with the consent of the sale, the discharge of the debt upon the EDA successfully closing the sale to Cambria and repaying the principal balance of the debt and dispensing the planning commission review, the EDA's authorization to sell that took place earlier tonight would would go into effect in the due diligence period, where the terms of the purchase agreement would begin effective tomorrow.
Anybody have any questions for our city administrator regarding this, Mr. Dewey?
Okay. How much is Cambria paying for the property?
It was on the last slide, one point four eight.
Well, that's what the total principal and balance of the loans are.
So, the purchase price is one million, four hundred sixty-eight thousand, ten dollars.
Okay.
So, approximately twelve thousand dollars less than the principal amount owed.
So, if I read this correctly, the E, EDA has been in technical default from thirty days after the loan was granted. Is that correct?
I'm going to have to confirm the terms of the original loan, but in effect, it's been.
They haven't paid a nickel.
Correct. However, I think both, both the loan and the mortgage, I believe, contain terms. The city can extend the terms without collection of interest in any sense.
Which brings me to why, when, you know, since two thousand ten, why wouldn't the EDA and/or the city do something to amend the loan document? I mean, if, you know, if, if you're a banker and you look at this, you go, why? Now, I get it. The six hundred and some dollars of monopoly, but nothing's been done. It's like it was ignored for fourteen years. The loan and the mortgage, not the efforts to sell the place, don't get me wrong. But.
It's been resting for quite some time, and there's been a lot of administration, a lot of other people ahead of us, Michael, that could have done something about this. Which, which leads me to why we're doing this tonight.
Precisely. But we are. It's on our plate.
On our plate.
And it's been kicked down the road. Now, it's got us stuck.
We've got two council members on the, on the council tonight that spend a lot of time with the EDA on this, so. But, I mean, I appreciate you.
So, are we breaking even?
So, we, at the end, effectively, in terms of principle, yes. So, the city will be able on the principle that was lent.
And all we missed out on, whatever interest in CDs we could have had over the last fourteen years.
Correct.
And then you said the.
Although, I would argue that, you know, from a, a appreciation standpoint, the value of the land has appreciated since two thousand ten, right? So, instead of having this money in a CD or interest-bearing account, it has been held in this land.
Right. But we're actually taking less than what we paid.
No, we're making more, but we've spent money to get rid of the built-up property that was on, or the buildings that were on.
Correct. So, so, the contract for deed itself was six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, right? So, that was the, in effect, the net purchase price. Now, the Lussoor Development Incorporated, which owned the property, or held the contract for deed prior to the EDA, had made some payments. I don't, I can't recall exactly how many payments they made on it to the Roloff family, right? So, the Roloff family originally owned this property. Had a contract deed with LSDI. LSDI was going to disband, yeah, in fact, and said, hey, from a development standpoint, the EDA should take an interest in this. The EDA authorized assuming that contract for deed. In doing so, had to pay it off, didn't have the cash to do it, borrowed the money from the city. And as part of all of this, then MINDOT was interested in putting J turns in up there. I think the city and the EDA both recognized the development potential up here, but without the direct access off one sixty-nine, open道皮 lane, which at the time is, well, even now,道皮 lane is not a high, not appropriate highway access. That's, you know, another discussion, and we'll get some MINDOT money for that eventually, hopefully. And so, it said, as part of this, the, the owners of the Dairy Queen at the time, DQ Inc., wanted to dispense with the property. So, the EDA, of course, the EDA, EDA said, okay, we'll buy up the property, raise the buildings, remove the fuel tanks, all that, prep it for future development, so that we can be ready to go when we got the buyer on board. Again, going back to memos from twenty eleven, twenty twelve, it seems to me, in my rudimentary interpretation of it, that the development of that property was pretty much a done deal, at least in the eyes of council at the time. This was ready to go. And so, the money invested in it, both in the property itself and in the, the, the putting in some of the infrastructure to prepare for that, so there's sewer, there's water, there's electric, it's ready to go, was an investment well made, because we're gonna turn around and sell this property almost right away, anyway. So, if we do collect some interest, okay, great. So, again, so, effectively, we lent out one point five million dollars, rough terms, without, certainly, I would say without an expectation that it wouldn't be collected on, without an expectation that it wouldn't be developed within a couple of years after taking ownership of it.
Where does the money come from? You mentioned, I wrote down, from the feds. Where does the money come from to support the revolving loan fund?
So, from my records, the revolving loan fund was state and federally funded for economic development purposes. There were some grand dollars that came in for either specific projects that didn't pan out in the early two thousands, maybe late nineteen nineties. My documentation doesn't point to directly where that came from, other than it was funded primarily through.
So, how much is in there now?
I can find the answer to that to you, for you.
Ballpark won't hold it to you.
And they are alive right now.
Roughly, I think, closer, around a million dollars.
So, that will go up to one point four, roughly?
Two point four, or two, yeah.
Has the city ever forgiven stuff like this before? That you're aware?
Not that I'm aware.
So, I mean, we're, we really don't have any choice but to approve.
I mean, devil's advocate says, yes, city council could say, no, we're not gonna forgive it, I think. What does that do to the EDA? Keeps the EDA on the hook for, you know, a forty-year financial hardship.
Twenty twenty-nine, so was this a good investment fourteen years ago?
Don't answer that. Don't answer. I, I would argue, you don't need to speculate on what happened twenty years ago. But don't answer. Any other questions? Anybody? We lost council member Swander, but we'll proceed ahead. I don't want to get called out for proceeding. So, any other, if not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of adopting Resolution R twenty twenty-four dash zero three three as presented. So, move. Thank you, council member, I mean, council member Williams. Thank you for saying that. Any other discussion? Hold just a minute, Mr. Swander. Hold. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? We have one opposition, Mr. Dewey, if you could note that. So, Resolution R twenty twenty-four dash zero three three has passed. And I want to thank council member Sullivan, council member Swander, and your work on this. I know it was a long year and a half, and we've got a long history of this land acquisition, and it's kind of the end of a long novel, so thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item seven B, delinquent utility account discussion. Mr. Roby, you wanna take us down this road?
Would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This agenda item brought some conversations with council members with quick questions about our utility billing process and how we, the process that we followed, eventually certified delinquent accounts to the property taxes. So, first, a number of years now, since twenty fifteen, the city has assessed the property taxes, delinquent accounts. Now, during that time, called the early years, twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, the city also did utility disconnects and utility shut-offs for delinquent balances. But inevitably, there would be some balance at the end of the year, where even though we're shutting people off, they still owe some money, and so we assess those dollars. There's a, I would call it, they say, a pretty strict established process for how we manage all of our accounts, specifically delinquent accounts. And the current process that we have was last addressed in twenty twenty-two, through city council action. I do want to note the very deliberate, intense efforts that staff make to work with, with customers of our utilities, who truly cannot afford to make their payments. There are resources out there, public and private, and staff work tirelessly to connect those individuals who cannot pay with resources that can help them, so that we don't get to the point of assessing the property. For our delinquent accounts in particular, there are multiple contacts that are made throughout the year, not only with phone calls, face-to-face interactions, but we do send out notices to everyone when they're at risk of being assessed. And then, any delinquent accounts that remain are adopted by Resolution of City Council each fall. And then, we send those assessment rolls to the county for inclusion in the following year's property taxes. Tonight is simply discussion only. If council, council can ask questions, can discuss. Director Grant is here to share details about the process, if there are questions in the process itself. If council wishes to explore alternative solutions, whether that's like utility account shut-offs or disconnects, that's something we can explore. But I would ask the city council to provide direction on that. And if the city council would like, city staff to explore what disconnects or shut-offs would look like, I would ask for city council's specific action to direct staff to do that, because it will involve the development of a draft policy and draft procedure, which will fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Roby. I have one quick question. Mr. Grant, if you don't mind stepping up to the podium. May fifteenth, tax, property taxes were due. We don't know yet what was collected on the delinquent accounts or note for maybe another week or two yet.
Yeah, we've, in the past couple of years, it's been May thirty-first to June tenth that we've received the check from the county. So, I'd say, within the next couple of weeks, for sure, we'll have a bunch of less than received at that point. And usually, that's the good, you know, half of, a good chunk of the overall total.
Mr. Dewey, I can only assume you have a comment or a question.
Well, if you guys had a guess, I'm the one that did, that this been pushing this. I don't disagree at all with the certification process. In two thousand fifteen, when that current city administrator proposed the certification process, she was absolutely right. All cities do it, every one of them. What she didn't know, or did not have chose not to include, was that all the cities also have disconnect policies to go with the certification. I've gone through it before, last year, the year before, city of New Prague, twice our size, twice the population, had five delinquent accounts for like thirteen hundred dollars. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Grant, but last year, we had like a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty to the tune of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, Mr. Mayor, to your point, do we get paid back? I didn't know, so I called the city treasurer, the county treasurer, Danny Anji. In two thousand twenty-two, delinquent utility certified in two thousand twenty-three was two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. There, at the end, as of twelve thirty-one twenty-three, there was still forty-six thousand dollars outstanding, which is eighteen percent less than what we had coming in. The prior year to that was a hundred and eighty-six five with thirty-one thousand outstanding, or seventeen percent. So, in that year, the entirety of the year, at least with the numbers I've got, you're gonna get about four out of the five dollars, roughly, that you assess. And in the, in the discussion, it said, yeah, the number of properties have gone down. Okay, that have been certified, but I looked at the money. Hundred eighty-six thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-one went up to two fifty-five in twenty-two. That's a thirty-seven percent increase. And then, from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, again, Mr. Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, certified about three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and that was a thirty-five percent increase from the prior year. I mean, if you do the extrapolation, come this fall, it's gonna be a half a million dollars. And two hundred people, or two hundred entities. My point is, I'm not asking to take anything away. But with the technology today, and I understood this. But with the technology today, and I understood this councilman Sullivan brought up, you know, you gotta go out there, you gotta turn the thing, you gotta take it off, put it back on. It's a keystroke, or it should be for the electric. On a computer. Boom, it turns it off. And. I tried. I looked, and I defy anybody on this council to find me another city in the state. That does it the way we do. In other words, totally only rely on the certification process. There aren't any that I could find. And I go through, I mean, at Arlington, St. Peter. New Prague, boom, 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 look them up. They all have disconnect policies. And they all have minuscule on a percentage basis. Certification dollars that when I talked to the treasurer here. It was, she said that, yes, the city of La Sore is a pain. Because they got to do three or four for New Prague, maybe one or two for Le Center. A hundred and forty five for La Sore have to be done manually. All that has to be done manually. I don't know how we can defend not having at least a. A cut off policy on the books. I don't get it. Because we're not recovering a hundred percent of the money. In a timely manner, and I would say in a timely manner would be a year. I think that's fair. So that's my spiel.
Thank you, Mr. Two.
Are you done?
You cannot be kept.
Um, what would that? Does anybody else have anything they want to add?
I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. We had a tax forfeit turned property settlement at the state recently. That I just would like staff to look into that to see if there's any implications on us putting. These delinquent accounts against properties that might end up being tax forfeited properties and any implications that might have. One other thing that Mr. Dewey brought up, we've got a lot of people. That are consistently on the rolls every year. So. Do we want to keep putting all this money on the same properties every year that we may end up seeing these? Go back as tax forfeited properties and what are the implications? Thank you.
And then we're, you know. We're caring. I mean, does anybody disagree that we're the city's not carrying these people? They have to. Mr. Dewey, you brought up some good points, and I hear you loud and clear. I do, I do. So with that said, you you had your platform. With that said, the council has had their discussion in the recommendation of what we should do before we do. Mr. Roby, I may be weighing on something at this time. When that said. I will be looking for motion for the to direct the staff for additional discovery to take additional action, whatever. They want to explore. But before we ask for a motion, Mr. Roby, do you want to say anything to conclude anything here?
No, I've been I've been for Mr. Grab, and he's closer to the process day to day than I am now. I'm well versed in the process. I think we.
I think you just, I would, I would.
Might. Before you get started, one thing, I mean, we did have a shut off policy. Has it? What has been the dramatic increase? I mean, was it basically the same? Was it still the same numbers, the same dollars amount? I mean, obviously, the last couple of years, it's gone up pretty drastic.
Better than double.
I mean, if that's the magic formula, we'd be crazy not to go back to that, but I just don't know. I don't think it is, but that's.
I would, I would say that part of the drastic increase last couple of years. I wouldn't expect it to continue because. We were just getting to a full year of late fees built into a year. So part of those increases were. And starting with the late fees, twenty twenty three was the first year that that was, they were. Built in every single month. So I would expect. It to go up because usually our rates go up and some bills would go up just just naturally like that. I wouldn't expect it to be another. Thirty five percent. What is it going to be? You know, nobody knows, but I wouldn't expect it to be at those drastic levels. And I would say that the numbers that I have are a little bit differently, follow the councilman for Julie with. The numbers that you got from Danny, the county. Because I showed that. There's usually a little bit more in the second year that that comes in that I would say we're more like ninety, ninety five than the eighty. But I can probably do separately and try to tackle that. But. Yeah, I mean, the the number of properties has gone down and a lot of them are. Repeat ones, at least in terms of we're talking about the the large dollar accounts, those typically are the ones that are. Year to year for for whatever their their choice, it's up to them that they seem to be this. Almost as you how they they plan for it and. Would that change if if we changed our policies? I would think for some it probably would, and others it probably wouldn't, but that's all. Their choice, obviously, but we can definitely look into whatever council recommends.
All right, and I would just leave this with just speaking of council actions in the past. We're coming out of pandemic times. The council decision was. If we're generally collecting, if we can expect to collect everything that we're billing. And maybe it's not within a year, right? But unless someone's going to follow the tax forfeiture. And then I have to have a very comfortable conversation with Danny. Danny says, hey, we're gonna list this property at auction for this, and I say, yeah, I got twenty grand in assessments on that property, so please don't list it that low. Which is has happened three times in the last two and a half years that I've been here. So it doesn't happen very frequently, right? So for the council decision was, if we're generally collecting the money. Other than that first year where in theory, yes, the utilities did bankroll. That while they waited for that money to come in and were bankrolling the balance, the year that it increases, we're bankrolling that balance. So that increase. That was tolerable. To avoid a couple of things. One was just to avoid the discomfort. Two was the complexity now of, you know, it's different than it was twenty years ago where. There weren't as many assistance programs, and now we're taking calls last minute from Minnesota Valley Action Council saying. Hey, don't shut them off. I can, we'll send you fifty dollars tomorrow. Or they just followed by for this program. Oh, well, we just clicked the button to shut them off. Okay, well, what, you know, what are the repercussions there? So it's much more complex than maybe was. I'm not saying it's possible because a lot of cities do it and a lot of cities. But again, the thought was, we're trying to give people the longest leash possible, and if they don't take advantage of it, it's to their financial detriment. Because the people, again, you could go back to the assessment roles, which are public record, back to twenty sixteen. And you look at those roles and a lot of those property addresses and names are exactly the same year after year after year. But that's. Despite the leash that's granted in terms of how long they have to pay their bill before we'll shut them off. They've made that decision. We're allowing them to make that decision, not making it for them. That's what council to make the decision that we're comfortable continuing to do what we're doing in spite of the fact that the numbers are starting to increase. And also, we, you know, we're adding the late fees. That was done because we had eliminated all late fees during. I wanted to go back and thought, you know what, the psychology of this would suggest that a lot of people will start paying on time because no one wants to pay anymore than they're already paying for the utilities. Well, lo and behold, you know, that that psychological effect is probably in place for something, but we know what it is because we. Ryan and Lindsay and Bonnie and Sally and the staff take calls on that, you know, I got these late fees coming away before they got these late fees, they're starting to accrue. So we know that is having some effect on it, but for a lot of these consistent properties, it's it's just not.
That's a, it's a very large number, the the late fees that accumulate over a period of a year. So keep in mind.
All right, well, Mr. Dewey, we've had our discussion. Thank you. Thank you to all the council members who weighed in on that and let the discussion done. We would look for a motion to direct the staff to do additional, I'll say the word exploration or take additional action. So. I will make a motion that the staff move ahead with some different options that we have to collect these late or these delinquent accounts. So moved. So motion by myself, seconded by Councilmember Dewey. Any other discussion, comments, concerns?
Yeah.
And we hope, Mr..
I don't think we need. I mean, there's enough diversity in twenty to twenty five at the most surrounding communities. And if we truly are the most unique one, it would be good to know. And I do remember, I mean, coming out of COVID, I do remember. The biggest part of why I voted for what we're doing now is that we were getting our money back eventually. It wasn't as fast as we would have liked, but we're getting it back. Not a hundred percent, but it was in the nineties. I remember that.
Yeah, and that's when I was looking, the number that I came up with, but I will look into the numbers from the county too, just so we can. Figure out there's different, depending on what point in time, I mean, the the number that we start with, then what we. Get approved by council. What we sent to the county and then everyone's others to really like payments after we send a number to the, so that number is. From the county, there's possibility for it to be a little different.
I guess my point is, we don't need fifty, but there's twenty five. Cities and they have different sizes and shapes and populations that we can get a good handle on in the area.
Thank you. I believe the motion was made by myself, seconded by Councilmember Dewey. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. We're going on to item seven C, Resolution R twenty twenty four dash zero three two update.
Thank you, Mr. Ranger, members of council. This was, this is City Clerk Lindsay Day's handiwork, which is to say. It's all great, it makes sense. So City Code directs that all retail tobacco licenses in the city are to be issued by the city. In all of twenty twenty three, summer of twenty twenty three, it was discovered that the county has been, as they do for a lot of other cities in the county. County issues tobacco licenses. And so we're now at the renewal time and per City Code, we are to be issuing the retail tobacco licenses. So we've been in contact with counties and informed the county that we will do the tobacco licensing going forward. And we've identified all the businesses who will need to switch their licenses over or have their licenses renewed. Underneath the city versus the county. The most fee associated with it is a hundred dollars per year, which is the same fee that is being charged by the county currently, so there will be no change to the annual license. For all our tobacco retailers, or to charge that fee, we need to add it. Be a resolution to the twenty twenty four governmental fee schedule, and that's the proposal for council.
Thank you. Any council members have any questions regarding this matter? If not, I want to make a motion to adopt Resolution R twenty twenty four dash zero three two. So moved. Thank you, Councilmember Dewey. Thank you, my councilmember Williams. Any other discussion, comments? If not, all those in favor? Anybody?
We will need a prorater for this year, though.
Oh, yeah.
Because they do need to run, according to City Code, they need to run from January to January.
Yes.
January to December.
Fair point. So I think vote noted, but yes, it would be prorated through the end of this year, and then sorry, January first will be a hundred dollars per year, but the rate will be a hundred dollars per year.
Thank you. We need to go again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. That takes us on to item nine. This will be reports, items of appreciation, council members, this is your opportunity to share what's going on in the community, what's going on with your. Commissions. We'll start as always with Councilmember Huntington.
Okay, nothing extra.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlier.
I attended Region Nine Economic Development Meeting on the fourteenth. I attended an H R A meeting on the fifteenth. And the La Sore County Officials' meeting is tomorrow night in Montgomery.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Thank you, Councilmember Swanberg.
Just congratulations to the graduating class of twenty twenty four, Lisa Henderson. Also, thank you to. All the folks who were involved in the Memorial Day services over the weekend.
Thank you, Councilmember Dewey. Nothing tonight, nothing tonight. Councilmember Williams.
I just want to recognize the department that puts up all the nice flowers around town. It looks very nice. And the harbor tree, the one that I'm aware is grown and has leaves, so somebody's very excited about it.
Thank you. All I have tonight was that I want to share what councilmembers Swanberg talked about. I was at the memorial service. I want to thank all the veterans who participated in that. All the veterans who attended, the Boy Scouts, the Sore Henderson Band, it was a good event. A little rainy took took away a little bit of the attendance, but it was still good. With that. We will be making a motion to close this meeting, but before we do, I want to read this. It's pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D. Dot zero five subdivision three, City Council will hold a closed meeting to discuss the city administrators' two thousand twenty three performance evaluation. So in that sense, I will entertain a motion to close the meeting. So moved. Thank you, Councilmember Huntington.
Second.
Second, Councilmembers Swanberg. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting is now closed.
Administratively.
Very good. Council meeting May 28th is back in order and at this time I'll hand over motion to adjutant.
So.
Thank you councilmember Huntington.
Okay.
Seconding councilmember Wills. All those in favor?
Alright.
Anybody who pulls the eyes out?